I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning to all.
Aye.
Good morning. Make a, uh, we'll call immediate order and I guess we've got a, uh, addition on here, we need to add a transfer from general basic, right?
Yes. To prove that.
For?
Thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars even?
Eighty-five cents.
And eighty-five cents, excuse me. So we'll add that to the agenda with that. The motion to approve the agenda is amended.
Nothing else to it? Make the motion.
We have a motion?
All second.
And a second. All of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Uh, minutes from the thirty-first.
It read June, it looks good, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Uh, general public concerns. Sheriff's in here, so there's no general public concern from him, so I guess that leads us to eight-thirty-five, John, if you don't mind going early, we got-
I don't mind at all.
Hi, John.
John is the Deputy Director of the Iowa Drainage District Association and our yearly update or annual update. Right, yeah?
Yeah, a couple of things I had to visit about, first of all, um, I want to talk about the spill issue with the waters in the United States, this is something that is sort of our mousy ball.
Yep.
Um, and something we've been dealing with for probably ten years. Um, we had a rule which was in existence which, um, had been, um, you know, in place for many years, which was working. Um, Obama administration came in and changed that rule. Uh, current administration came in and changed from the back. Biden administration comes in and is trying to change the rule again. And, you know, I guess the question you all have is why is this important? Um, why it's important is that what they're attempting to do with the rule is to define, um, the authority of EPA to regulate waters in the United States and what constitutes a water in the United States. What the rule used to say is that to be regulated, water has to be navigable. So clearly drainage districts were not considered part of that. What the Obama administration did is came in and took the word navigable out. So that left EPA with the potential to regulate every puddle in the United States. That was challenged in court and a federal judge put a stain on it, so that rule did not go into effect. And then the current administration comes in and basically goes back to the old rule. And now the ping pong game continues where the Biden administration is going in and trying to take us potentially to the point where EPA can be regulated in drainage districts. Why that's important to you all is that, uh, what that could do is take control of the districts out of your hands and essentially cede it to the Department of Natural Resources. Um, DNR is the state authority in Iowa that enforces the Clean Water Act. So if EPA is successful and it's determined that drainage districts run the Clean Water Act, they're gonna get, potentially, if you have to get permits from the DNR every time you want to do a repair or every time you want to do an improvement. And I think, I think you all know that that is not a situation that we want to go to. Um, so, IDDA commented on the rule, uh, we urged that it, um, not be changed. Um, the good thing is the process is a slow process. Uh, so what has to happen is EPA has published their proposed rule, they've got comments open on it. Those comments will close and then EPA supposedly looks at those comments and, you know, determines if they can change their proposal. And at that point, they can put a rule into effect and at that point, it'll be sued again. You know, doesn't matter what they do, they will be sued again. That's just routine. Some group will take it on and, um, probably succeed in scoring things down enough so that, you know, we've got some time to respond. Um, you know, this never seems to go away. And, uh, all I can tell you is we're gonna follow the issue very closely and, um, keep you all posted and do what we need to do to try to make sure that you all, uh, control, uh, as trustees, the decisions in your county in terms of repairs and maintenance and improvements on drainage. Talk a little bit about the state legislature. Um, first of all, I talked about a bill that we got passed last year, which we were very pleased about. It was our number one priority. Um, we had two things that we were concerned about, it came to us from, um, drainage clerks and, uh, the first was, um, publication when you do a, um, a classification or a reclassification. Uh, and, um, what the law used to say is if you were involved in that process, you'd have to publish the assessment schedule. And particularly if you had a big district, that schedule could be, you know, multiple pages and thousands of dollars, um, to publish the information. And the drainage clerk was saying, you know, is, if you're, you're essentially publishing information that the residents of the district probably don't want. So why are we forcing them to pay? Because those publication costs were assessed back as a drainage, why are we forcing them to pay for information they already have? So that's the first thing we did was we took that, uh, provision out, so you no longer have to publish the schedule. I mean, obviously you have to publish that you're doing a classification and classification, but the schedule part does not have to be published. Um, the second part of that legislation deals with, um, when you have to have an engineer's report on a drainage repair. And what the, what it used to say is if you, um, were exceeding fifty thousand dollars in cost and repair costs in the district, that you had to have an engineer's report. And I had, you know, a number of counties tell me that fifty thousand dollars in today's day and age, you get there really, really quickly. And to have to involve an engineer in essentially routine work. You know, all that does is increase the cost. And so, we had a lot of sentiment in the legislature that that number should be raised, but the question then becomes if you give an increase, what number do you raise it to? And we had some legislators that wanted to go as high as, I think one said four hundred thousand dollars. And our thought was, you know, that's quite good money to be spending without having an engineer take a look at it or there's gotta be some sort of a happy medium there. Um, so the legislature has this thing in state law called competitive bid threshold, which is used in a number of different state projects. That's a, it's a number that's set by committee, so it can move up and down without the legislature having to pass laws to judge it. And what the decision was, was to tie drainage repairs through competitive bid threshold. So that's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars right now.
So what you're saying is in the future, it'll, it could fluctuate up, possibly not down, but more than likely it will fluctuate up.
Yeah, there's a group that looks at it and they make a decision whether it needs to stay there or whether it needs to change. But right now it's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So if you've got a repair, um, as long as you're in that hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar threshold, you're gonna have to get an engineer's report, certainly you can. That's, you know, what we wanted to do was, was give more flexibility to you all, as trustees, in terms of how that decision is made and whether you need to retain an engineer or not. So certainly you can, but you don't have to. Um, the last thing that came to us was, um, put forth by a state senator and her, um, her concern was, she said, you know, I have a lot of a lot of snowbirds in my county and, you know, lately town December first and they may not come back till March or April and some of them don't have their mail addresses, so they may not be getting drainage notices. Um, can we use something in terms of inform the notice, uh, so that, just another way to keep people informed? And essentially what she was saying was email. So, um, you know, can we email somebody in the district, get their request if there's something going on in the district? And so that was added to the law, it's called inform the notice. So if you've got, you know, someone in your county in the district who wants to be notified, contact the others, office, contact the drainage clerk, whatever, get on the email list and notify them that way. It's not an official notice, when we say official, that kicks out all different sections of state law that we didn't want to go to. So this is unofficial notice. So those are the three changes that were made. Um, we got the bill, um, passed the House, I think ninety-seven to nothing, it passed the Senate, um, forty-seven to two. One of those senators on the two side was my own state senator, who I'm making a conversation with, um, and got it to the governor's office and Governor Reynolds signed the bill. So, um, that took effect July first and, uh, we're very pleased about that. Um, you know, this year we, uh, there's, there's some discussion of a bill that's been, uh, I understand you all have taken a look, it's sent about five hundred and some potential changes there. Um, there's, uh, it's essentially, you know, a re, you know, for all intents and purposes of rewriting the major sections of the drainage code. Uh, and right now we take the position that let's just slow down a little bit and see what's exactly in there before we, uh, before we go down that road.
Is that the one Don Adler's question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I'll say we did have a presentation, if you want to call it that. But we understand that so far, I, I think they should just leave that alone.
Yeah.
Quite honestly.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, so tell them the district, you know, association, drainage district association, you guys are generally pretty common sense. I mean, and it just appears that that, uh, not entirely sure, I mean, I think that like, you know, you made a good point, John, they raised the threshold of the competitive bid up to around thirty-nine. It's not saying that you can't hire an engineer for a project, saying you don't, you're not by code required to. I think in all fairness, they're trying to put back in that, oh, aye, if there's some dollar thresholds here, yeah, maybe an engineer needs to be involved to get them back into the process. I prefer to just keep it as it is.
Yeah.
And that muddies the water and, uh, I don't know if you guys can speak up, the guys in Gales.
Well, we're right sure as opposed to right now, right?
Yeah.
The IDDA has.
Oh, they did they? Okay, good. Because that, that'd be the simplest, the best way to go.
Not to say there's not some good stuff in the bill, or maybe, we just haven't seen enough of it yet to our legal counsel's not adding to it.
Very convoluted.
And there's a lot of stuff going on there and it's just, yeah.
I don't see it as a benefit to the majority of the drainage districts.
Thank you. Um, last thing I'll talk about quickly is, um, IDDA has been involved in a, um, federal grant. Um, we were approached by the Iowa Ag Water Alliance, which is an offshoot of the Iowa Slummin' Association, about, um, becoming a partner or a federal grant that they had requested from the, uh, NRTS, National Resource Management Service. And, uh, we, we did agree to become a partner in the proposal and essentially what they're talking about in this grant is what's called conservation drainage. Um, and what that means from, from the perspective, potentially as a drainage district trustee, is that, you know, what we have right now is a situation in drainage law where, you know, what you all are doing, uh, with drainage is taking water off the ground and taking it off as quickly as possible. That's the whole purpose of drainage, is to make topland more productive. The point of the matter is that in Iowa, we know in some points, kind of, sometimes we have too much rain or other times we don't have enough rain. And it's too dry. So the question then becomes, number one, is there a way to reach a little ground and store some of that water so that when we need it in the future, it's there? And you can, you know, there are companies here in Iowa that, that build, um, and sell essentially control structures underneath the ground that, um, keep more water in the soil profile as opposed to draining it all away immediately to keep more water in the soil profile. There's other, other systems that actually store the water in plenty of basins or ponds or any number of different things. Um, so it becomes more of an issue of managing water as opposed to just getting rid of water. And that's what we're talking about. And, and where, where you all are conflicted with that is, um, you know, I give you an example of a drainage improvement. So what happens with a drainage improvement now is that for the most part, when an improvement is done, what happens is that the granites are installed to, you know, give the, give the drainage district a higher coefficient of drainage. Um, what conservation drainage says, is as long as we're rebuilding the landscape, as long as we're rebuilding that system, maybe there's some conservation practices that can be built into that as part of that design. So maybe we can design some wetlands into that, or maybe some saturated duffers, or some bioreactors, or any number of things, uh, that, uh, act to make drainage a more environmentally friendly process. Now, the rub with this is that you all, as trustees of the drainage districts, do not have the legal authority to assess for water quality, water quality practices. All you can do is, is assess for drainage. So, if these water conservation practices or environmental practices are going in, they're gonna have to be-
Funded somewhere else.
Funded somewhere else, exactly. Um, so what we're hopeful, we're trying to do on the grant is create a funding stream for those things to happen. And, uh, you know, I think a good example of this is they're saying there's an improvement that's being contemplated in, I may be the county, but it's, it's a county west of here, it's a major, major improvement and as part of that improvement, they're building, um, they're planning on building a wetland as part of the improvement, where wetland is gonna be paid for by Iowa's. All of the drainage stuff is gonna be paid for with the drainage assessment, but the wetland part is paid by Iowa's. So that's what we're hopeful of, of doing with this grant, so if you've got some landowners, uh, that are part of the improvement that are willing to look at a conservation practices that will be extremely funded, you can do that as part of an improvement. So certainly nothing you all have to do, it, it just provides more options. I, I think the days that we can sit there as drainage trustees and say that all we're doing is draining land, I, I think those days are, are coming to a close. Um, if, if we are not willing to improve some in terms of, of how we drain land, I think we're gonna have to go on in force.
Well, that's been brought up, that exact topic that you're talking about, John, at, you know, a couple of the, you know, yearly meetings. I'm sure you guys have talked about it in your meetings. There, I think there's some validity to that, I mean, especially with an outside funding source. You mentioned grants, grants, is that the grant thing kind of where the money is coming from?
Yeah, and the, you know, practice is- The thing is, is that, um, you know, the state law just wrote very correctly, there's a certain set of three in the number of different funding streams, uh, for water quality practices that can be accessed and, um, that's, you know, those are all things that we have, can, both can work together on this kind of thing.
If they work together, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
The problem you're gonna have is how do you take out high dollar land?
Put it into a-
Put it into a wetland or put it into a, into-
This whole-
I know, I'm just saying that.
There's different, there's different practices for different projects.
Right.
Some of them are bioreactors, some of them are saturated buffers, some of them are wetlands. And, you know, each project will lend itself to, you know, potentially different practices. But at the end result, like John's saying, is obviously water quality, which it's kind of like nutrient reduction plan, that there, that overlaps into this a little bit too, that farmers don't kind of take their own initiative, if drainage districts don't kind of take theirs along these lines, somewhere along the line, it will be forced, it will be forced and you don't want the forcing.
Right.
So I think this is a-
They're actively stalling react.
I think this is a great, you know, idea to, you know, and it's nice. Like you said, the, the projects, the improvements are the upsized tile and bigger and more. And that's always paid for by the district. But if this is a, it fits into that project and they don't pay for it, everyone will be a lot-
It will be a long term, it will be stretching, it's all going on the curve.
Yeah, it's soft at this point.
Yeah.
But obviously, if it fits and it's not an additional cost to them other than a new improvement, that I think the landowners are gonna be more receptive as well, if it's paid for. So, I think it's the right direction. I think it is.
We appreciate you coming out.
Good luck, hey, John, thanks for all you do.
Appreciate that.
Plug it away on them down there.
Thank you again.
You get around and see every colony, best you can?
Uh, every year.
Chuck Grassley's got nothing on you.
Well, luckily and unwellfully, I don't have ninety-nine.
Right.
I don't know if I could do ninety-nine.
Yeah, you got a pretty good chuck, Chuck.
How many do we got total right now?
Uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, six, seven, yeah.
Thanks for that, John.
Yeah, all right.
All right, thanks, John.
Bye.
Okay. Sorry, Ben, we're a minute late, do you wanna wait or you wanna? Come on out.
What do you guys want?
No, I'm teasing you.
Wait. Couple items on the agenda. The first is to approve an application to work in the county right of way for the Addison Farmers Co-op. Um, this goes back in hand with, um, with another new-
Fertilizer?
Fertilizer.
Storage?
And, uh, needing to have their crane set up for their mill rights to start constructing walls, brick grusses, the likes. Um, talking to Kevin Walker last week, uh, he didn't realize that he had to get a permit for this, he'd just been having Nick Collins talk to his dad, Tom, about closing short check, uh, sort of, short section of T-20, right there at the elevator. Um, I talked to Kevin, I said we gotta run through the permit process. We went ahead and did close the road for them. In the meantime, because we have crane ready to go and we're at that stage, uh, we're just rerouting what traffic is in town on one of the city streets.
Say just hop around.
So you just jump around, it's two blocks, you know, it's not a very large run around. But we've got all the signs and everything in place and, and the fencing. Uh, the elevator's in charge of maintaining the fencing that's in place, uh, similar to how we do, uh, try to tile crossing.
Yeah.
I'm guessing as long as it doesn't interfere with their rush hour traffic through Addison, it should work?
I, yeah.
How long, uh, how long is this gonna take?
Four to six weeks, so. It's, it's guys that are trying to get things going right now that are having to pay-
Probably a little bit cranky.
And it's-
Everything's in order?
It's, it's-
We don't get in any trouble for, uh, damaged Addison streets, do we?
No, uh, and any damage that results from the crane setting on the roadway would be the elevator's responsibility.
Okay, that's what I was concerned about, the Addison, come back and say, no, because of your detour, our little, this old crap.
Yeah, they're one of those that have a twenty-eighty agreement with us for city level five hundred where maintenance response to let us fall back on the city. And we give them the, uh, the money from the DOT for that stretch of road.
Everything else is in all in order then?
Yes.
Well, I'll make that motion to accept the application to work in the right of way for Addison Farmers Co-op.
Aye, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and you said that's four to six weeks?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries.
The second item that I've got on the agenda is to discuss and possibly add on quotes for purchasing motor gators for local towns. We sent out quotes to Murphy Tractor and Ziegler, both for badge, for quotes. The last time we did it in twenty nineteen, they compared a seven-seventy-two GP to the twelve M-three spec wise. That has shifted some of their equipment around as far as numbering and, uh, they got rid of the twelve M-three, that's now the one-forty. And the old one-forty is now the one-fifty, so as far as comparison wise, Murphy wanted, uh, their John Deere seven-seventy-two compared to the one-fifty instead of the one-forty. Um, so we sent quotes out comparing the one, the seven-seventy-two to the one-fifty and requested that if they wanted to submit the one-forty for a quote, that Ziegler do it at that time. You can see from the bid tabs, or from the quote tabs, cost after trade-in for the seven-seventy-two was seven oh four, five forty. For the one-fifty was six ninety-two, four sixty-eight, and for the one-forty is six forty-three, four seventy-eight. The difference between the one-fifty and the one-forty as far as Ziegler is about eight hundred pounds and twenty horsepower.
Are you saying essentially, cause, correct me if I'm wrong, but the most recent purchases that we actually have now are cats?
Yes.
They would be comparable to what, they changed their numbering system around to the one-fifties?
They'd be comparable to the one-fforties.
They'd be comparable to the one-fforties.
The twelve M-threes, uh-
The twelve, okay, they changed their numbering, but, so they're comparable to the one-forty, what we have now?
Is it worth it to get the bigger motor or anything like that, the weight?
That's where the discussion comes in.
Yeah.
Uh, in my opinion, the one-forty is a more than adequate machine. Mike Whitehead's been running it down here in Beaver Township and Colton's running it in Avery and Rutland Township. I've never heard a complaint about lack of power or, you know, dealing with snow and we've had the machines for two years now.
Well, that's the question. I mean, it is a differential, but-
It's a lot of money for-
Forty-nine thousand more.
Yeah, it's twenty horse.
Yeah.
What's that, Ben?
It's twenty-five thousand a machine to upgrade twenty horse and, and eight hundred pounds.
Yeah. But I think this has come up in conversation, that, like you said, about two years with the comparable to the one-forty, whatever number they had on it, uh, everybody's been pretty happy with them.
They're like the- They've been very happy.
Been working well, no issues, um-
So what's your recommendation?
My recommendation would be that we go with the one-fforties. Uh, as far as what I budgeted for next fiscal year, it's right in line for the equipment. Um, it is the same machine as the twelve M-threes that we have been running that my operators have all been very happy with. Um, my foreman at that shop, he's a cat man.
Yep.
So he, he tickled pink at the fact that we would order cats. I don't think he's got a preference whether it's the one-forty or the one-fifty, he just wants a cat.
Yeah, that's the, apparently twenty-five thousand dollar question, is do you need, you know-
Do you need that extra twenty horse?
If, if, if you found that it was, eh, maybe, I would-
I would think you'd know by now.
I would, you'll take that. And you have it, even snow removal, hasn't been an issue.
Are you concerned about the delivery date? It looks like the delivery dates are a little longer on the cat than the John Deere.
That would be the only reason if you opted to go with the Deere's, is it was a little bit sooner delivery date. Uh, talking to Trevor, he thought it'd be ten to twelve months delivery from ordering.
That'll work with your schedule?
It should be fine. I mean, our machines are, the, the machines that we're looking at trading are winter machines. So the, the machines that we'd be moving to, you know, the machines that we're trading are winter machines, so they'll be done being operated here, well-
Well, tomorrow.
So they shouldn't get any more hours put on them from what they are right now.
What's the difference in the John Deere horsepower versus the one forty and one fifty? Are they, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out the money for the, for the buck?
So, there's the specifications, um, I've got another type of deer, some, like, to look at.
Yes.
Um, so John Deere's got a six seventy-two that's comparable to their one forty, all-wheel drive, all-around, there's only one county that has a six seventy-two that they're running, at Lyon County, and they're getting rid of it, because, for whatever reason, the, the deer is considerably smaller, I, I think it's lighter weight, they're saying, or it doesn't have the, the oomph on the, on the six seventy-two.
Yeah.
We know the seven seventies and the seven seventy-twos have enough power, because that's majority of what our John Deere machines are, uh, but, when I talked to Bruce with Murphy, he didn't know of any surrounding counties that were running six seventy-twos.
So it's fairly comparable.
Right.
And like you said, these aren't new machines to us, we know what they are.
Right.
That's a nice thing that, yes, like Rick said, some history, a couple of years at least on manure type cats, that it's been a real positive.
Well, I'd be nervous if we were starting out with, didn't have one, and we're wondering if we should go with a bigger motor, if we've got a couple that we're happy with, to me.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good thing.
I'll make the motion for the purchase of the two one forty cats.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for the purchase of the two one forty, uh, cat from Ziegler, and delivery date would be ten to twelve months, motion in a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Beyond that, we are, uh, uh, working on building our oil stand in the Humble Shop location, redoing all of our oil barrels, and the extra stuff around it, I know you guys have mentioned it when you guys did the site inspection, uh, cleaning shops, working on equipment, repairing things that have been overlooked while we've been hauling rock or moving snow, um, contractors finishing up on the road, they figures it'll be done today.
Yeah, wonderful, good.
And so, be replacing seemingly tiles that were damaged in the water, as well today and tomorrow, that's kind of what we're doing, uh, got it down to top three applicants for shoes replacement, um, conducting second interviews, I did one Friday afternoon, and another one today, so, we'll have the recommendation for her replacement on next week's agenda.
Okay, just a question on the motor craters, those be made here, in the United States? Well, didn't we have one that was something?
I believe they get made just across the border.
I wonder.
I'm afraid of that.
You're not talking Missouri?
No. I'm not talking Missouri, uh, John Deers are locally built, there, you know, so there's something you said about a machine that gets built in Davenport, I don't think that's a bad thing, just when it comes to price, and you're talking another sixty thousand compared to one forty, or another twelve thousand compared to the one forty.
Right, I just was curious, the news on our cab, locating yet, still out in limbo somewhere?
If it, if it doesn't come by the time the ground falls out, do we, will we rent another one?
I would assume so, I'll contact the, uh.
I would ask, just to see if we got the ability to use one, so we'll have a machine in order to do what we need to do.
Usually at the beginning part of the year, we're not doing a lot of digging, uh, we're hauling rock on roads, plating roads, trying to get everything shaped up for the year, but if we don't have the machine back by beginning of June, middle of June, then I start getting worried, I guess, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I steer on all these six seventy.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
I have a lot of kids up on the roof, and it's probably a little, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't been up on it yet, so, you know, I, I know my quality of work wouldn't be the same back twenty below, it would be twenty below, yeah, I'll get up there today and make sure.
All right, you want to jump down to this transfer?
Certainly, yeah.
Look for a motion to.
Can we get a quick explanation on what are we doing here?
This is a corrective entry for, it was paid from the, um, let me see, General Basic, and it should have been paid from the capital project itself, so it's just a correction.
So it's bringing money back into the fund that it should be in?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to transfer the money.
All right.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to transfer, uh, the amount of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-five cents, uh, from General Basic Fund to Capital Projects Funds, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries, make some money. All right, except in place on file, Treasury Semiannual Report, um, from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Do you have a copy of that?
I'm looking to see here.
I didn't see a copy of it, it's on the blog.
No, I don't think so.
I don't, I didn't see it.
Okay, good, I thought you guys did.
She don't have the treasures, was it in your drawer? Look in your drawer.
Yeah.
Hey, Trish.
Yeah.
Never mind, I didn't, I was.
I, I looked in my drawer, because I knew that the one from Denise is in there, so I pulled it out, she put it in her drawer, they hid them, in case the. Suppose we should get Jana in here, if she wants to make any explanation on this?
Yeah, this is, this is a copy of the email that was sent out.
Yeah.
I don't have the report.
No, there's only four reports.
Do you need a grabber?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The copy I had, she wasn't on, so I didn't have a lot. Janne gave me one.
It's just, it's just in, there's nothing in, it's just, you just explanation that the email was about.
Like musical chairs. It dressed up pretty good today, I must give it a.
I tried to every day.
You're getting better, you're getting better. Not even knowing, you are. Are you gonna be gone the end of this month again?
I know soon.
Oh, I'm gonna be gone, but I'm not gonna miss a meeting.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave on a Monday afternoon and come back on a Sunday.
Perfect.
So.
Where are you going?
See my daughter.
Over in Oklahoma?
Um, Scottsdale, Phoenix, Phoenix area.
That's back and forth.
Boy, hell, that goes warmer here just about than it was down there.
It was when I was down there too, geez, I can't get away from the cold.
Yeah.
We went down there for our thirtieth wedding anniversary, I won't say how many years ago, but anyway, it was cold, I mean, I mean, we were wearing sweatshirts, and I was thinking, I wish I had a heavier coat than my sweatshirt, and the, we were on Clearwater Beach, and the sand was white, it looked like snow drift.
I didn't, turned that in, and I thought we were gonna wait, but, um, so the elderly credit is change, is the legislation change that came through last year, allowing an individual seventy and over that has property, and fall in the two-hundred-and-fifty percentile poverty range, to get an additional money reduction on their tax owed, um, we don't, it doesn't start, um, not, not this fall, but the following year, this fall, anybody that has to sit up high, they create a baseline for them, and then they're saying, shouldn't have to raise substantially from that baseline, like Jan was telling Bruce, we won't know how that'll affect us, because from where I read that legislative, the Q and A on page five did she include that, the state legislations are not covering the big events of this.
Of course not, well, how much, do you have any idea, like, on an average, how many dollars are you talking, I tried to figure that out.
Yeah, we'll go back and, uh, probably compare, like, take an example from last year to this year, just to see how it'll play out, you know, it's even hard to know how many seventy-year-olds own property.
Right.
Own homes.
And then you gotta be under that, in that threshold.
Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty percent threshold, which is, what, forty thousand dollars?
That's what I'm thinking, forty thousand.
So it's four, that's the threshold, or is that?
The minimum, or, that's the maximum you can make, for two people, is that what it's on there, I think.
So the thing is, just the value, is they just raised the threshold?
Yeah, for seventy and over.
For seventy and over, so it just, it basically just changed the.
Gave them.
Bottom line, if I qualified now, I wouldn't qualify then. Well, you might, because actually, there were more, more people possibly who'd qualify.
That's the, yeah, and then just to help, because it starts at age sixty-five, or totally disabled, so then, once you hit seventy, then you have another baseline to maybe get assistance, so we just wanted to make you aware of it, but we'll bring you more numbers as we have a chance to give us.
Well, essentially, it's more the elderly low-income part, it's not the disability part.
Right.
Elderly low-income, the, the, the floor or the baseline is going up, and it could happen.
It depends on where you live, you know, some of them have nice homes, and pay four thousand dollars in taxes, than when you're only making social security money, possibly.
Right.
Or if out dies, and you're all dead money, you could hit that forty thousand dollars.
So it just takes pure income, it doesn't take into effect what you, what properties you own, or anything like that?
It has to be income, pure income, um, social security, IFRS.
Right, all that, all that into consideration, okay.
Well, thank you. You know, that's their, it's on their back to come in to prove that to you.
Yeah, they fill out an application every year, and we try to, we do send them out to the repeat customers, and, so probably, once we know a little more, put an article in the paper to remind them that, if you haven't done this before.
When's the deadline to have that application?
Well, um, June first for, uh, this year, yeah, okay.
Is this something that, in this case, I guess, would people be seventy, do they have to fill something out yearly?
Mm-hmm.
Yearly.
They have to qualify every year.
If they want to qualify, yearly.
Yep.
They have to have it documented, so.
And the way they set the new program up, you have to establish that base, to know if you're gonna get more money, and if you forget to apply, then your base starts all over again, so they have to be sure to apply every year, for those seventy and over.
What chances?
Seventy, it's seven, that's not sixty-five.
Well, the, the old program will stay in there, sixty-five and over, so those people will, but they still have to apply every year too, but.
Yes, when you get to seventy, they use a different base.
Formula, yeah, yeah, and.
So essentially, the people that would be doing this, were probably already doing it, most of them.
Most of them.
If they, if they did start at sixty-five.
Right.
So they're familiar with having to qualify.
Right.
They probably would come back in, but if they've reached age seventy or over, they, there may be a different, like Rick said, formula.
And I think the income guideline before was like twenty-five thousand, so that's a bit more.
Yeah.
Where can they get the, um.
We have the forms in our office, or they can get them online from the, um, Department of Revenue. That's kind of.
You been applying?
I didn't either, on that one, but.
You been applying? Hey, Jana, why are you in here, and we have to approve your semiannual report?
I thought you were.
Yeah, but, did you, uh, what did you hear?
Nothing was unusual on that, but I looked at everything, money was pretty consistent, and, um.
See, when I went in there and asked her that, she goes, well, it's only one page, it's only two, it's like six pages. Then somebody opened and claimed that they put, added on to her folder.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate the update on that, but then, yeah, on the report, nothing that you would call our attention to?
No, it's, have the, of course, the nine hundred thousand art money sitting in there, which helps the bottom line.
Makes it look good.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, well, we appreciate your time.
Good luck with all that.
Yeah, I'll probably back in touch when we know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, is there a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the Treasury Semi- Semiannual Report for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
A motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
I guess the chairman.
Sure, on the back.
Sure.
Uh, all right, now we authorize the chairman to sign a renewal for Humboldt County Health Insurance with IG HCP.
Yeah, and this basically is just, uh, signing up for insurance, is not setting our rate, it's just signing on a renewal, Nace will be up here within a month or so to talk through, and I, I would guess we're gonna have to increase our self-funding just a little bit.
Yeah, that's kind of, wasn't there an email or something on that?
Yep.
Yeah, I read that, yeah.
Good color.
But basically, this is just to sign the renewal letter.
So how'd the meeting go, was it?
It was good, you know, um.
Didn't have any huge, our group didn't have any huge outputs, or?
Oh, yeah, we did, we had two claims that are over a million dollars.
Yikes.
The group, not Humboldt County, the group.
No, the, the group.
And, uh, they talked a lot about, um, we had a pharmacist who works for Blue Cross Blue Shield, and what she basically said is, you really need to ask when you go in for generic drugs, is this, say, is this the cheapest generic I can get? Because she gave a, gave a list of several drugs, and the one stuck in my mind, it was eleven dollars a month, or a hundred and ninety dollars a month, and they were all generics.
Really?
Yeah, because people think generics are all going to be the same price.
Yeah.
They're not, they're made from, you know, a pharmacist could get generics from seven different manufacturers, and they'd all be a different price, that's why you see a different price from different pharmacists to the next pharmacist, depends on where he's getting his drugs from.
Oh, I didn't know.
So, that was rather interesting, um.
So it's helpful for all of our people to make that comment, is that cheaper?
Yeah, yeah, to ask, is this, because even if you switch from a tablet to a capsule, it reduces the cost by about seventy percent, which is crazy on some drugs.
Because a drug is a drug.
Yeah, that's what they said.
The ingredient is just the ingredient, it doesn't matter.
It's how it's, you know, taken, whether it's a pill or a capsule, uh, so that was kind of an, an eye-opener, uh, we did have a discussion about tiering our group, because, you know, we go on our, our loss ratio, I was gonna dig our book out from last year, but I think last year, we were around a hundred percent, Humboldt County was, and now this year, we're at sixty percent, and that, when I say loss ratio, that is, we'll be paying premiums compared to what they paid in claims, so last year, say, I'm just gonna throw a number, say we had a hundred thousand dollars worth of premiums had paid in, they paid a hundred thousand dollars worth of claims, now this year, say, we use that same number, we would have paid in a hundred thousand dollars worth of premiums, they only paid sixty thousand dollars worth of claims, and if the lower your loss ratio, the better rate you get from Blue Cross Blue Shield, so our, our group went down this year just a little bit, about one, one percent from last year, so we had a pretty decent renewal rate, um, but some people in the group thought, well, you know, we've been consistently low for loss group compared to some of the other county, or, I shouldn't say county.
Entities.
Entities, because they're cities, they're counties, so they suggested a tiered system, like if you're a. Like if you're one, I'm gonna say one point one percent loss ratio, excuse me, that's wrong, under the seventy-five percent loss ratio, you'd be get like a one point one percent increase. If you're at a seventy-six to a hundred, a hundred and ten percent, you get a four point seven increase. But if you're over the one-ten, you get a twelve point seven increase.
Hey, how'd that discussion go?
That would hurt. Well, you know, some people were thinking, well, geez, I'm in that low group, I, my, my rate decrease, like for us, would be one point one percent this year instead of five point two-two. But.
But what happens if you go out with the upper rate?
Well, that was if you happened to have a bad year.
How long does it take you to get out of there?
Well, yeah, and that's, that was the, the discussion, do you look at that like every three years, every five years?
Uh-huh.
Every year? Uh, because the idea, and they said, wasn't the idea of getting in this group to have a more even?
More of a group plan, and if you tier it, you're essentially a little bit going back to like you're on your own, you're in a smaller group.
Yeah.
You're in the higher, middle, lower, and obviously your rate increases will be reflected.
Yeah, so.
So it's a move. Probably about, move it by the penalty almost for the higher.
Yeah.
The benefit for the lower.
Benefit for the lower, penalty for the highest, but, you know, some of that stuff is what they call accidents, you know, it's not just awful unhealthy living.
Right.
You know, because that's what they're saying, oh, well, they're doing this, we're doing that, you know, we're trying to keep our employees more healthy, but well, here you have a premature baby or something, or, or, um.
Like you said, Rick, an accident.
Or an accident.
An accident's an accident.
And then you're penalized, and, and so after the discussion for about fifteen, twenty minutes, they thought they'd just kinda tuck that away and maybe review it.
Again, I can understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I, I can understand the tucking it away part.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be a pool, and that's.
Yeah, and that's, we're going, we're going with the pool.
Yeah, it's starting to get.
So we decided, nah, we're not gonna talk about it for a while.
Yeah.
And we'll review it down the road.
Do you have, I mean, as the group, as the pool, discussions of, you know, accidents are accidents, but healthy living, everybody could do better at.
Yeah.
And do you have that? Because that does have an effect on the overall group.
Well, a year ago, they were pushing this healthy, healthy living thing, and they wanted to make it a mandate that everybody in the group did it. And it was gonna cost you every, I can't remember the number, but it was gonna cost every employee, you had to pay into this healthy living thing. And they had two, trying to think of the numbers, they started off with like sixty individuals, when it got down to the end, there was twenty-five left, and they lost about ten pounds as a whole.
Mm-hmm.
So they had showed some improvement, but they had a, a good, big group stop, and it just dwindled, dwindled, dwindled down to, I don't think it was a very good term.
Doesn't sound like it.
Very term for your money.
It didn't sound like it, no, no.
I like eighty-two.
Obviously, they promote it, but it's just hard to.
And, and it's still there, if you wanna sign up for it.
Right.
But I didn't, I didn't see like this great results.
I think it's better if you just do a wellness program.
Oh, yeah, like we're doing now, I think it's working better for us.
I really, yeah, commend the, the folks that are involved in that wellness, I mean, I know part of it includes you can get a reduced price membership to the, you know, recreational center, and, you know, we do all get emails from some of the functions that they're doing, and that is definitely a, a good thing to have that, you know, in place and people, you know, it's, it's a voluntary thing, and at least it's, at least there's just something there for them to take part in.
Yeah, yeah.
It does take self-motivation.
Well, in this type of weather, you don't have the ability to go out and walk outside, you have the ability to go.
We do, we do offer, as the county and employees, you know, things that I know is definitely some people take pretty big advantage of that.
Yeah.
So I think we're on the right track as our little group.
Yeah. So, yeah, she'll be up to visit with us about that, uh, here in the near future and, uh.
The one question was, were you at the right hotel when we were talking?
Yes.
Good.
Well, they had had a water main break. So the lower level of the hotel had four inches of water in.
Oh, ice skating.
Yeah, so we got moved to a different room.
Oh, in Florida?
No, it was in Des Moines.
Oh, Des Moines.
I wish I'd gone to Florida, I mean, I love it.
We were talking in the car and all of a sudden he goes, hey, I'm gonna have to get off here, I'm not sure I'm at the right hotel.
Yeah, because, you know, I went downstairs and they, what the heck? So they, they found a different room and.
Well, well, we appreciate you going down and that type of.
It's amazing, I mean, I mean, you walked downstairs, that much water.
Hmm, that was pretty serious.
Four inches, three, four inches, yeah.
Well, with all that discussion.
Johnson.
Oh, really? Yeah, that's probably.
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign the renewal for Humboldt County Health Insurance with the IG HCP.
All right.
Yeah, second.
We have a motion in a second for the signing of the renewal. Any other discussion?
Just one, I mean, as we have this in front of us, uh, so we're, we kinda know what the premium rate was, so that's where we're at there.
Yeah.
We just have to, as you mentioned, Rick, we just kinda have to set our county rate and that rate.
So our rate based on our self-funding.
Self-funding that build up our money.
Yeah, our, our self-funding went down about sixty-seven thousand from last year.
Right.
She wants to redo that?
Yeah, yeah, I think I talked with her a little bit, she thought it should be brought up a little bit.
Back up a little bit.
So I'm afraid, you know.
We run out of money.
Yeah, because we have about a hundred and fifty thousand balance in there, and if we don't, it'll be down to a hundred thousand if we keep current like it is.
Question on that is, you said Denise will be by?
Yeah.
For that discussion?
Yeah.
Will that be prior to setting the budget numbers?
Probably not.
Probably not.
But we can use them figures.
We can use this figure to tack on just a little bit for the budget and we'll be fine.
Okay, that was my question, you know what I mean? Because she always does a really good job of discussing.
Yeah, she's kept guaranteeing me what day she was gonna come up here, but.
But we kinda know which direction we're going.
Yeah, and then one other change, I guess they were changing life insurance, I don't know if anybody in the county is using that, but they changed, they're gonna, they're gonna change life insurance companies to somebody else.
Okay, but you'll tell us about that.
Yeah.
Okay, that was just, that was it.
Okay. With that, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We got the discussion on meeting, uh, for February twenty-first, that would be Monday is President's Day. I know Rimer Struckin is going.
I do. Who decided that claim?
Fourth of Thursday, President's Day.
Mm-hmm.
That would be a claim today.
It is a.
I'm making a week.
Yep.
Better have it on Tuesday.
The last.
Everything is.
Make it twenty-second.
I think we have, and this is what I gotta check on, with the MMP, they set their hearing date, and I think it was for the twenty-first.
What's MMP?
Manure Management, that new one. That was, I need to publish the paper. And I need to check with Indy Garza.
Mm-hmm.
So I could check on it today and let y'all know.
Well, that, we'll, we don't really have to have it in the paper? If it's published?
Excuse me, what?
It was in the paper last week, February twenty-first about the.
President's.
You're saying the public hearing for the manure management plan thing, that's a, is there any way that can just be moved to the twenty-second? Because we're, courthouse is, the courthouse is closed on the twenty-first.
How far ahead does it have to be published?
Ten days.
I can check on that, see if there's a correction.
Then as Dave mentioned, we can maybe just have a fairly quick meeting on the twenty-second and take care of that as well.
And it doesn't bother me to come in here on Monday.
Doesn't make you.
It don't matter to me.
The courthouse is closed.
Courthouse is closed on Monday.
But I got a key.
I have a key.
I, I don't care.
I can, I can do Monday too, if, if, I mean, that's, uh, doesn't affect us as much as it does the auditor.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever.
Well, you're supposed to be on vacation, is what I'm saying.
Whatever day you want to do.
You're supposed to be on vacation, but if that has been published, and that's a hearing date, and it's a malfunction to try to reset it even one day, then I suggest we convene Monday with claims and the hearing and call it a meeting.
They set the date because we had deferred the time because Randy was gone.
How many, I mean, how many, what time did they have it for on the twenty-first, do you remember?
I got to go.
I'm guessing probably.
I guess just because courthouse closes doesn't preclude.
I mean, if there's.
I need to, but I.
I don't think that we're gonna have a whole lot of other than the claims and.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about that hearing date, and like Trish mentioned, I think that was an extension, because I think they said they wanted it on the end of January, but we got it pushed to February, so if that's the case, would you agree, be agreeable that we just meet briefly on the twenty-first and take care of business?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with it.
So we'll be here on the twenty-first.
Looks like it, at least we will. We won't, but.
I'll be in the office.
Okay, we'll call.
All right.
Well, then.
We are gonna be here on the twenty-first.
Same time, same place.
All of us presidents, except in court.
And what they have at nine o'clock, you know, if they had that, then we could meet, if we only gotta do a claim, we might wanna meet a little, I mean, I don't know what time they put the meeting for, for that hearing. You know, if it's at nine o'clock, sometimes they put those things at nine o'clock, we could meet, you know. We're, we're not half thirty minutes to kill, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, you can send out, yeah, I agree with Andy, if it is a set time, then we can alter it by a half hour.
Just have her ask, ask her what time it's set for and we'll.
Set it.
Adjust our meeting accordingly before we get done.
Yeah.
All right, except the quote from BMW, weed control specialist for weeds for the county in which twenty-two, twenty-three, I think that was last week, we talked about that briefly. Uh, looks like.
I believe the bottom line at that, uh.
Twenty-two, oh, sixty-two, fifty, and past years, we.
Right, at that, we put forty-five thousand in the budget for the weed control, that is a very close estimate quote, it's typically been coming in a little bit under, even that number.
Mm-hmm.
But like anything else, there could be something to cause it to go over, but so, and the forty-five has been basically static the last couple of years, so that budget number didn't change from this fiscal year to next fiscal year, and the quote didn't change much, so.
This is this company.
Like we're doing the northern, east, northeast?
North half, we're basically weed control, we're splitting, uh, east-west, north-south halves on our, uh, control.
Okay.
Well, I'll make that motion to accept the quote from BMW.
I'll second Sandy's motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept the quote from BMW for forty-two, oh, sixty-two, fifty. Any other discussion?
And if you can stamp your stamp and sign it, and Don would just like a copy of that back for his records, then he just needs that front copy, you know, Trish can get that back to him, he appreciates it, and we got it taken care of.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are gonna spray weeds. All right. This is discussion and action on the medical examiner contract that we've discussed. Dave, you have any updates? I saw we had an email.
Well, I think, uh, Michelle said these are all out there, they'll be interested. I think, uh, which one was it, there was two of them that was interested in the job. I don't remember which ones they were.
Well, um, I guess currently we have, was it Dr. Rosika from?
Arnold Park.
And we need him, he comes down from his current residence, which is up Spirit Lake, Arnold Park area. That's the cost of the mileage increase and whatnot, so I guess that was the reason why this was brought up, so.
Yeah, and a, and a time factor.
Do you wanna pick one of them, or do you wanna just have them, how do you wanna do it? I don't.
Do you have the names by chance?
One is probably Dr. Long, is my guess.
It's Dr. Long and Dr. Paul, the two out of the clinic, whether there's somebody else from the ER that they're talking about.
Oh, that's, that's one.
Long and Paul, yeah. I know he, Long was interested before, but he wanted to have some more information on it.
Okay, well, we can table it until next week, get the name, get the names correct.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is, uh, just have them write a letter of request to be the medical examiner, then we can appoint them, ask them for that, I guess.
So we'll just table that till next week.
We need to make a motion to table it?
Yep.
So I'll make that motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to table the medical examiner's contract until next week. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion's table. Um, I guess all we have left is the, we gotta go into drainage.
Looks like we need to make a motion to go into drainage.
Do you wanna do?
What do you wanna do?
Do your committee reports quick?
Yeah, okay, do that.
No, I could, I could. We had a special meeting for the kitty cat space analysis with McKinley Bailey, trying to decide, you know, exactly how we're gonna use our space and what do we wanna do with it? Did we wanna lease some of it to the schools? But that just wasn't, we figured, we're starting to make headway, we're starting to grow, and we're actually starting to get close to being in the black or in the black, so we really didn't wanna, you know what I mean? You'd have to give them a six months or more a year, you know what I mean? We, because it's like, you can't do it a month by month lease, because that's not fair to teachers, you know, if, if they would use that space, and then there's the thing of, how do you get them in and out, you know, there's things we have to get with DHS, we just thought it'd be too much work and not enough payback for that, so we're just gonna work on continuing to grow the, um, employees and, um, of course, then the, the children coming in. That's all I have.
What day was that?
Oh, I'm sorry, the third.
Uh, no, I am at.
You bet.
Uh, like thirty minutes, but maybe stop by now to drop off.
I'm done.
You're done?
I'm done.
Okay. The only thing I had, the assessor's thing up there on Wednesday.
Just to refresh my memory, that is set for the twenty-eighth, right, at six?
Yeah, I think it is, I guess, but I wrote that.
Yep.
February 28th, at six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yep. All right, Eric?
Uh, just a second, I'm writing that down too, Bruce, six on the 28th, I didn't write it down.
Bruce, for budget.
Yep, so, on Tuesday the first, uh, that evening, I had an EMA board meeting, six o'clock at the ELC, got through the budget hearing, quite well with that, and then on Wednesday the second, the assessor's conference board at six o'clock downstairs at the magistrate's room, so that was my two meetings last week.
Uh, on the second Wednesday, went to the conference board at six, and then Thursday, I was in Des Moines, uh, for the IGHCP meeting, Thursday and Friday, that's what I had.
Okay. All I had was the town conference board on Wednesday night at six o'clock. I guess, just a reminder for this week, is Thursday is the Embassy Suites, the meeting down at, the supervisor's statewide meeting down in Des Moines, just a day-long meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
How many of you are going?
And I'm, I'm planning on going.
I'm signed up.
Do...
I'm signed up.
You're signed up?
I didn't sign up.
Somebody emailed me and said I was.
I didn't sign up, I figured...
We were...
You're...
You don't have to go, plus I think it costs you a second.
I can check.
I don't need to go. The rest of you is going, well, you can tell me what's going on.
Well, you can go, and I'll stay home.
I don't need the credits, you guys might, so...
Trish, if you wanna find out the time for that hearing that you have on the 21st, then we'll look for a motion to go into drainage, unless you have anything you wanna bring up?
Alice training tomorrow, if anybody wants to come in, nine o'clock.
I do actually have that written down. Is it nine or nine, nine thirty I had?
Yeah. I did that upstairs the last time, whenever that was last.
Was it fall, did they do that again?
I think so, yeah, they needed to have another, they said, because...
I mean, isn't that training, it's in...
Do you put, uh, signs out, so you don't scare anybody out that pulls up and sees somebody walking in? I don't have a clue, I've never been to it.
You just watch videos.
All right.
Like we did.
Uh, other business that we've been kicking around, I know it's not a big deal, but the tree removal, we do have the quote from Cavalli Tree Service.
I think we had, uh, I don't know, did he turn one in, Brad Cook? He was supposed to, I talked to him, I saw him driving through here the other day, and I think he was gonna get a quote, but he said he wouldn't touch anything till, got a little less snow out there, so he didn't make such a mess in our yard.
Another thing, be cautiously optimistic, it might start warming up one day, and you don't really wanna be on the lawn, the ground's not frosty, so...
Yeah.
It's soft underneath, it's, it's soft underneath.
Right.
It is.
Yes, it is.
So, whichever, I mean, if we can, the best time to get it done is before it really does get nice out.
Well, you just decide, I'll get ahold of him and ask him if he got his quote in, and...
Let me see if I can check on it.
Okay.
The sixteenth is a joint meeting for the conservation, and...
Yes, I forgot that, that's next.
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth is up at the conservation office.
Yep, have that...
The fourteenth is the farm bureau.
It's at six o'clock, right?
Yes.
Meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, fourteen, yeah, six o'clock, and farm bureau is at six, too, right?
Yeah.
Or sixteen, or fourteen?
Yep.
Happy Valentine's.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
We'll get our seven-layer salad.
Are we, are we getting sent this year?
I don't, I thought it said a meal, did it?
That's, that's like we had meal before, or...
So...
I won't be attending that one.
Me neither.
Okay.
I'll be in Kansas City that day, so I'll miss the meeting here.
All right, are we, uh, ready to go into drainage then? You find out on the, the 21st on that hearing, and we can set our meeting accordingly, there's no sense coming in at eight-thirty if that meeting, or hearing's at nine.
Exactly.
So, look for a motion to go into drainage, quick.
Make the motion to go into drainage.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to go into drainage, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those same sign, we're in drainage, forty-four, forty-three, excuse me.
So if the Bengals win the Super Bowl, are you gonna wear those, uh, Bengal stripes?
You know, I got a pair of them, I got a pair of them, thanks for reminding me.
If you were to disclose when you did that, you wouldn't be embarrassed.
You wear, I mean, you wear Hawkeye stuff all the time, and it doesn't bother you, so I would think that, uh, Bengals stuff would be...
Iowa State scored the lowest points. My God, that is, that was so bad.
By, on TV.
I was, I was very, very scared.
But they get like five points or something, it's hard to say that.
Who was the, the one between, was it, uh, Michigan State and somebody else, wasn't it like twenty-one to, sixteen or seventeen in halftime, and the, the guy that hit a three-pointer was the leading scorer? I mean, it was like, he could've got anybody out of the stands to toss one up and...
I know, it's amazing how these guys who shoot thousands and thousands and thousands of basketballs a year, like, all of a sudden, they just turn cold, and they can't make a layup, they can't dunk the ball, they can't do anything.
Yeah.
It's just incredible.
Well, Eric took a brief, I'm guessing, walk.
Want to do a quick yoga?
So, Rick, this is, I'm guessing, in response to last week's discussion on, uh, last, uh, DD-11 lateral A, that row of trees that goes around the edge of that, we kind of wondered how much they would be interested in taking out, and, and I guess they're interested in finding out, they would like to be hired, basically, before they do too much to...
Right. We had just discussed, you know, the photo from their drone flight, and stating that there was three feet of salt in the ditch, and suggesting going, instead of doing just section twenty-four, to do the, the short, I think it said it was like fourteen hundred feet in section twenty-five, it also stated removing as many of the trees as possible so that there, we don't have to worry about taking that twenty-five or thirty feet of right-of-way out, and leaving the rest of them so that way, future trees that fall won't interfere with the ditch. But, we discussed everything, but it was never actually motioned...
A motion to put them in charge of...
To hire them for that.
Do you have those topics?
Yeah, I see that here.
And I guess I'm, I'm only assuming that, the only people you're gonna make mad is probably some deer hunters that...
Yeah.
Chase deer out of there in fall, but, 'cause it doesn't look like there's a house in that section, so it isn't like it's a grove or a...
Are they, uh, they gonna plan on a canyon that, the ditch, basically, where it ties in all the way?
Right, we're eleven-sub-two outlets, end of the head of that at Russ Larson's property, and then go all the way to the main open ditch.
That's, that was their comment, for me.
Right. Yeah, they had suggested that, and then they thought they would do an assessment schedule to see if a portion of sub-two-eleven outlets at the bulkhead, if part of that would need to be annexed in, or if we just wanna do a reclassification so that the entire lateral will become its own assessment schedule for future cleanouts and repairs. Because right now, whatever we do here will have to be assessed to the entire district.
Right.
And all we did was just discuss it, but they were never really actually...
Put in a position to make decisions.
So do you do this first, get it, do the reclassification, and give it so that the people in that, that are affected by this are the ones that pay for it?
Correct.
Well, that was what we asked him, didn't we ask him last week?
Yes, we agreed on that, that, just what you're discussing, that, uh, yeah, we had a vote that, uh, neither, no, that was on 103.
Yeah.
But we didn't, we didn't actually do it on, uh, no official vote.
We discussed this, but we didn't...
So the official action was on the 103, because there's also discussion of a slightly different reclassification there, so that's taken care of, so, I guess we just need to do the same thing on this, so we're looking, are we considering it's a reclassification then, it looks like, for this, what do you wanna call this, branch, something or other?
Yeah, I'm guessing you're gonna have to reclassify, give it a title, and then if there is any land that needs to be annexed in, you have to go through the annexation process before you do the project.
Correct.
I'd make a wild guess, you never know about the annexation, it's probably gonna be more reclassification, because it was, like Kim said, it's never been split off, and the whole district really doesn't gain, it's just that area, they need to figure out the area, so...
Exactly.
Well, for the sake of argument, I'll make the motion to go ahead with the, is it reclassification?
Yep.
For that branch, for that branch that we've talked about on, uh, DD-11, uh, so we can get that reclassification completed, and Jacobson Westergaard can take care of that.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, and a second for, um, Jacobson Westergaard for a reclassification to review of sub-two of eleven, any other discussions? All in favor?
Lateral A.
It does say lateral A, I guess they, yeah, lateral A.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those same sign, motion carries. All right, that was famous.
And do we want to appoint commissioners to work with Jacobson Westergaard on that?
On what?
On the reclass?
On the reclassification.
Fifty B.
Yeah, we do, we'll have to, somebody, we would, uh, of course, you always do Brent. How about, how about, uh...
Chris Worgland?
Chris Worgland.
We just got him started, that'd be a nice small one for him to start on.
Yep.
Pretty simple.
The two new commissioners that were added to our list last year were Corey Erkson and J.D. Myers.
And you have Chris Worgland listed as well.
Yes, we have, uh, Brent Keen, Derek Lorry, Chris Worgland, and Pat Hill.
So do you wanna...
We got two veterans on.
I was gonna say, do you wanna put one with, uh, new?
I, I think we should have one new one and one of the veterans on there.
Yep, and any of those would have no conflict of interest.
Either have Pat or, uh, Brent be the...
Ask him.
And Brent is probably fairly busy in basketball.
Right now, yeah, he's probably busy, so maybe check with Pat first, if she'd like to.
What, what her schedule would be, and then ask one of those newer people to get their feet wet.
Okay.
Not literally, but if they'd be interested.
I'll send them, I'll send them letters, and then get that information to Jacobson Westergaard.
All right.
All right.
Anything else in drainage?
Nope, just a couple claims to sign.
I have something that Kim gave us a copy of, that we just had a discussion on, with our man John Torbert, and that, he has pointed out that, uh, the Waters of the United States malfunction, that there's comment period, and suggesting that we comment during the period, um, which I think today is about the last day. Kim, have you done anything on that? Have you looked into this website where you could make that comment?
No.
Have you, you seen this?
I, I did.
I was, I mean...
I did not actually reply to it.
For what it's worth, it won't hurt, it's stating that we're not thrilled about that, as, as neither is Drainage Association. Would you think that that would be a good idea, to have the drainage clerk make that comment?
No, it doesn't hurt.
It, it won't, it's...
I don't think it's gonna make a whole lot of difference, but...
I would agree with that. If they, they can say that, well, there's another one that's in disagreement, or...
If they...
Well, the counties are looking at it and actually caring about it, I mean...
Yeah, if nobody, if no one makes any mention, that, that doesn't bode well for the people that are, you know, were not in favor of what they're up to, so, I would, I don't know if we need a motion, but I would suggest that you do, like, do that today.
Okay.
Looks like you have to get into their website, and...
Right.
Just hopefully it doesn't take too much, but comment.
Really, it, it won't, it's just I did not put my opinions in there until after I spoke with the board.
Oh, you know what our opinion is, we don't like it, you know, if you wanna comment, I want, I wanna comment accordingly.
All right.
Well, one other thing in drainage.
Sure.
It, it hasn't to do with Humble, but, uh, Don Edwards, uh, Guth had been up to Palo Alto and talked to their board, and they had signed off as in favor on it, and so John seen that, so he called him up and said, "Why did you sign to be in favor, like, give me one reason," and they couldn't give him a reason, any of these, they just kinda got bullied into it, you know, 'cause he just, he just won't go away.
Evidently, their explanation must've been better than the...
They didn't have an explanation, why'd they sign?
No, I mean, they, they were here, they were...
They didn't have a good...
The more they talked, the less I liked it.
Yeah, the more, we listened, they were...
Well, if you hear that one county is in favor, but they did sign it, and we asked, asked them, I, I, the DA asked them why, and they really didn't know why they did.
Well, that doesn't really make sense at all, but...
No, it don't, I think a lot of it was, they just thought, just, you know, they were getting, getting pressure from here to there, and, I don't know, I don't know why, they wouldn't give a reason why they signed it.
Uh, and we got to tell John personally, Dave, that appreciate him and the association, common sense, that, that's kinda like, this, this, this isn't really necessary, it's just, it doesn't, not in our part of the world, anyway, no.
Well, we haven't had enough time keeping track of what's going on in our own county, let alone letting somebody that isn't here, or, um, looking at it on the satellite picture, trying to figure out what they wanna do with it, and so, that's my opinion.
That is kinda interesting, though.
Yeah.
I think they knew what they were in.
Yeah, 'cause that, that showed up, and so John immediately called up there and said, "Hey, what you guys..."
What's going on here?
"...go along with this?" Well, I don't know.
That's not good.
No.
All right.
Interesting.
I don't think you look at it too closely.
I don't think they did either, maybe they just wanted to get rid of them.
Responsible for what they're doing.
We did too, but we didn't...
You already have some documentation, you go through engineers, we document everything we do, but if you wanna do something like this program, that should be assigned to private tile, so then, that way, they have documentation through the DNR on what's going on in the county, but not hold the board or the districts accountable for what they do. I can say it on a private level, so that way, you are held accountable for what you do with your private tile.
Are you talking in regards to this Waters United States?
Yeah, but not for the districts.
I don't agree with that, I mean, it's the same difference.
Basically, the, the government wants to control every drop of water, you know?
Yeah, it's, no, it's not good for private districts or otherwise, 'cause you gotta remember, these districts are set up, even the big tile systems, there's a lot of private tile that feeds into that.
It, it's the outlet for the private tile.
Yes, it is, 'cause if they don't have a ditch close by, they have a tile hopefully close by, and so, no, our...
I mean, you look at the map up there, there isn't much private land that isn't in the district.
No, not much.
Very little.
Which happened to be by a creek or a river, yep. No, that is something that, like, for example, the government wants to get their fingers into more stuff, and that's not an idea.
So they can tax you for permits, this and that, create more government jobs, that don't need to be needed.
Then essentially, private district or otherwise, you'd never get anything accomplished.
Usually, there's no cost to the permit, but you can pretty much say it's gonna take four to six months before you get a permit back, you do the work that you need to do.
You, you don't wanna go down that road.
'Cause we have to fill out the same permit anytime you replace a bridge or a box over, just to a trade replacement, and...
And before you put that tile, it's fine, you gotta do the archeological study, and...
Oh, yeah, you might find out, who the hell knows what, yep.
Which reminds me, Ben, I've seen that Iowa has all these bad bridges, and...
These are all...
From Pennsylvania, too, when it collapsed. Oh, we have bridges that are, are they really classified as a bridge? Wooden structures, uh, are, are those classified, would they be as a bridge?
Well, for the DOT to recognize it being a bridge, it's gotta be twenty foot or longer. So, sort of the math, the DOT, they have to...
Keep it if you want. It just happens to be in that road, and it gets tossed in, and...
It's slowly, but in the way I have, they just have an open monitor, or something like that.
All right. Okay, with that, we...
Motion to adjourn on drainage.
We will have, I'll accept it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to get out of drainage, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those same sign, we are out of drainage. Now I'm looking for...
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Ten o'clock.
Second?
In a second, at ten o'clock, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those same... Close same...